I'd like to call the City Council meeting of Monday, June 23rd to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams? Alderman Morgan, I'm sorry, Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An announcement from our AV guy, if you could turn your phone on airplane mode because otherwise it affects the speakers and then people can't hear on the recording or on the broadcast. We'd appreciate that. Item three, approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the June 9th, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, presentations. Police and Fire Commission annual report to the City Council presented by Chairperson Sharon Hoffman.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I thought I'd have a bigger crowd. I tried to park in Walgreens and then I was like, oh wow, there's plenty of parking here. So maybe it's my speech, I don't know. Anyway, the most recent meeting of the Prospect Heights Fire Commission, Police Commission, was held on Wednesday, April 30th. Meetings are pending approval. We have a meeting later on this week. I'm pleased to report that all of our meetings this past year were held in person, which is great. Pandemic's over, hopefully. We met a total of nine times, four were special meetings, and the remaining five were regularly scheduled sessions. Although our city is relatively geographically compact, we have a highly active police, active department that responded to 12,533 calls for service over this past year, that's from May to May. The average is approximately 1,046 monthly service calls or 35 calls per day helping keeping our streets safe for the residents. I'm also proud to report that our full-time social worker, Rosangela Maldonado, provided direct support to 527 families during this period of time. That's almost once a day, over once a day. So we have a very, you know, active police social worker who is invaluable in providing services to our residents.
Yes.
She assisted with 42 orders of protections and offered additional support to family facing domestic sensitive issues. Compared to last year, we saw a 3% decrease in order protections, which is, that's good news, that's great news. And a 1% increase in the number of families served. So we're getting to more people, which is really, really important. They know that we're available, they know, they don't feel, you know, worried about us coming in and talking with them, and that's what we want. We just want to say, here, we're here for services, this is the services, take them if you want, and if you don't want them, you don't have to take them. Having a stable social worker who is familiar with the court proceedings significantly contributes to building trust between residents and the police department. Rosangela recently earned her postgraduate certification and she's now a licensed clinical social worker, which means she has even more tools in her toolbox to help out residents, whether there's housing needs or crisis count, she can do direct counseling herself, short-term, that kind of stuff, whatever's needed to make sure these families are getting the services that they require. And knowing what's available, and it's really about knowing what services are available. Bringing even more expertise to assist the residents. Her guidance in resource planning and navigating the complex paperwork received at the Raleigh Meadows Courthouse has become an invaluable asset to our community. I also want to say that, you know, just recently, the chief gave me a couple accommodation letters, I think actually some people on the council sent those letters in, saying that the residents are really happy that the police are working and the police in working with the social worker. It really is a great team that they have together so that there's things that may be more sensitive, that the social worker can help out with, and then there's things that the police need to handle, and they're free to handle them, but they have a full arsenal of assistance around them in helping things. And that really builds a lot of community trust in our police department, which you know, you know, we don't have a lot of that going on out in the world today, so it's just really important that we feel that, you know, we're doing a good job with the police department and the residents feel that we are there helping them. In response to the continued implementation of the Public Safety Act, established in September of 2023, the department remains proactive and compliant with the necessary legislative changes. Things are constantly evolving and changing, and the chief is making sure that we're sitting at the table and getting, and working with our criminal justice partners so that we're following the law the way it's constantly evolving. So this year, I would also like to highlight, you know, I look back at all the notes and I'm thinking, well, you know, we do a number of things, and then we can list them, you know, we've done 20 things or whatever, but I think I wanted to point out this year, two things that were, you know, that were sort of highlighted that stuck out for me. And that was coffee with the Prospect Heights Police Department at the Rob Roy Golf Center. It gives a chance for the police to just kind of sit down with the residents and, you know, say what's going on, and for them to learn kind of what's going on. It's sort of an interaction thing where it's just sitting back, it's not, you know, no heavy-duty kind of stuff, just kind of... So that took place on February 18, 2025, and then the annual award ceremony, which was held on Thursday, February 27. This honors the police personnel and community volunteers. At this event, Mayor Leiblitzing and the Chief of Police recognized outstanding dedication and bravery, showcasing our community's shared commitment, which it is, to one another. I encourage all council members and residents, mark your calendars and attend these important celebrations that will be coming up next year. Personnel updates include the promotion of Chief Derman, who succeeded Chief Williams in Camp Negro upon his retirement in May, Monday, February 3rd. Chief Camp Negro began his career with the department and served in every role over the years. That's really amazing. For a department this small and to be in every single role is truly amazing. His tenure was marked by numerous commendations, including three life-saving awards and a milestone of 75 DUI arrests. Again, these arrests are, you know, it's not something that we can be proud of, but it's something that we could potentially be saving a life or saving some victims, even of their own person, either hurting themselves or hurting another person, by making these arrests when we find out people are under the influence. He also served as a field training officer for many of our officers. His leadership will be greatly missed, but we are confident that Chief Derman will continue to advance the department with innovative practices. He's got a good role model there, and he now becomes the role model for the rest of the officers, and we're very excited for that. Additional promotions include Sergeant Mark Buffant to W Chief and Detective Keith O'Connor to Detective Sergeant. Both bring a wealth of experience to their new administrative roles. Department, younger, you know, younger personnel is now coming up in the ranks, so that's going to give us some really good stability, and that's very important in the police department. The chaos with, you know, changing of roles and constantly having to get used to new people or whatever, we don't have that here. Everyone that comes here pretty much wants to stay here, and that's a great sign, that's a great problem we have. I'm also pleased to report that the department is fully staffed, I think was, I don't know, we're looking for a part-time one now, right? I think we're advertising for a part-time one, but other than that, that, again, is, we always feel like we're coming from the back end, but I think now we pretty much know what we're looking for, so it's very extensive doing interviewing and testing, and it's a rigorous process. We spend weekends interviewing candidates and then come out with only, you know, three or four on a list, so while it is frustrating in one sense, it does assure that we're trying to get the best of the best. And sometimes by the time we get the best on that list to the top, somebody else from another department comes and snatches them because they've got their own list. So, you know, we're in competition with all the surrounding suburbs. So our department is smaller, but I think what we offer is a wider variety of experiences for officers and more smaller-town feeling, and I think that's important for some, and works well for some, doesn't work for others. Some are just meant to be police departments and they just don't want you to know who they are, or they want to know where, they want to meet, sort of be anonymous. Well, here, it's kind of hard to be anonymous because you're probably on a lot and the town isn't that big, and, you know, so we're expecting to give us the services that we're paying you for. So, all right. On behalf of the commissioners, Fiorito, Reebman, and myself, we sincerely want to thank the mayor, Leiblitzing, and the entire council for your support. We are honored to serve and proud to present this annual report for the Prospect Heights Police Department.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to say I attended both of those events, and they were great, and love to see more of those since next year.
Yeah, Rob Roy had already asked to have another event, I think in September, so.
Yes.
They liked when the police...
We'll be back there in September.
Okay, good, good. They enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no appointments, confirmations, or proclamations of public comments on agenda matters, five-minute limit, time limit?
Yes, Mayor, we have two individuals. Genevieve Charet, if you'd like to come on up.
Hello, Genevieve Charet, Ward 2, 5 Elton Road. I'm requesting that the council make a commitment tonight to the people of Prospect Heights who are already raising foul and good faith. Change the cap for permits to a cap on permits for new chicken owners and permit all residents who currently have birds and grandfathering existing birds who will become disallowed by the proposed new ordinance. These two things are complementary and will improve resident cooperation with and perception of the ordinance, reducing resistance. We don't know the true number of households who have birds. If people are afraid, they won't be able to get a permit, and if they are afraid of what will happen to their animals in 12 months, they are less likely to support the process. They feel disrespected, especially when annual inspections are being levied against them and nobody else. If birds who are not creating a nuisance can be allowed to live out their natural lives here in the only homes they've ever known, I think residents would feel much better about the ordinance and about Prospect Heights politics in general. I understand that a blanket 12-month period feels like a nice, clean break, and for things like making sure your coops and structures are in compliance, I completely agree, and we can make that compromise, but for roosters and extra hens who were obtained legally and in good faith, it is not reasonable or ethical to expect residents to eliminate these animals. It is nearly impossible to rehome chickens, especially males or females who are past their prime egg-laying years. As a female passed my prime egg-laying years, I understand. We have checked with Chicago Rooster Crew, a local group that assists with rehoming local birds, and with the Adopt a Bird Network, who works with bird-friendly shelters and rescues nationwide. Chicago Rooster Crew is closed to new intake, and Adopt a Bird reported that most other rescues are as well. Furthermore, they said blanket bans like this one result in dumped birds, increasing burdens on animal control and police departments, and an increase in cockfighting activities. I gave you all the benefit of the doubt that when this started, you may not have understood the repercussions of asking people to eliminate their birds, but you do now. I recently spoke with someone who lives in a condo and has three dogs, and recently her association changed the bylaws and will only allow two dogs. They never considered not grandfathering in pre-existing animals. If they had, she would have, in her words, been livid in a filed suit. She also happens to be an attorney who specializes in property rights issues, so I thought that our interaction was an especially good and informed example to present. I know that the members of the council don't have personal experience with chickens and that it may be hard for some to think of them as anything other than dinner, but many of you do have pets or have the ability to be empathetic to those who do. I'm asking you to make this decision not just as lawmakers, but as neighbors and human beings who care about doing the kind and ethical thing. These families are here, these animals are here, and because of the police FOIA that shows 601 animal complaints since 2020, only one of which involves a chicken nuisance, we know that things are working pretty well with those people and animals that are already here. So cap the new permits if you must, but please show current residents that you respect them and care about their families just as much as everybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nikki Moyler, sorry?
Hi, Nikki Moylan, 108 West Kennelworth. Good evening, council. I'm not quite sure what else I can say at this point, since you guys have seen me a lot, but I'm still going to try to get you to consider the two sticking points that have been mentioned over and over again regarding chickens, and in my opinion, have still not been given worthy reasons to continue moving forward with. The PZBA, who worked with this, with community members for an entire year on this issue, did not find annual inspections as necessary and agreed that they are a gross overstep and violation of our community rights, not to mention a waste of city resources. They will cause undue burden and hardship on chicken owners. They are not justified as no other residential homes, even those with pools, which are an actual threat to humans, are annually inspected. I still have not heard valid reasons as to why this is needed and why chicken owners who represent a very small percentage of our community are being targeted with this requirement. While I appreciate the mayor saying at the last meeting that how inspections are conducted has yet to be decided, which I do generally appreciate, I'm still a proponent of photo inspections as absolutely necessary, but again, I still have yet to hear meaningful and valid reasons of why we even feel that those are necessary. As for the need for 75 permits, I do understand that you guys want to have a number on things and that you want to be able to regulate how many chicken owners there are in the city. I get that. You're putting that safeguard in place, though, along with no more than two houses in a close vicinity because of the fear that someone could end up surrounded by 100 chickens despite that never happening in our city's history. So I'd like to be very clear here. Some of these regulations that you're about to vote on are regulations that are fear-based and are not fact-based. Another point that you guys brought up through this process is that there's allegedly a silent majority of people who are unhappy with chickens, and Genevieve just brought this up regarding the FOIA request, where out of 601 complaints, one of them in the last four years was from chickens. So not only does this tell us that people do in fact call for animal complaints, because that was another rebuttal to us, so that's not accurate, people do call for animal complaints, and chickens are not the main concern here. Many of us have been coming to these meetings for the past year and a half with facts, research, and suggestions that still have yet to be considered. Again, why not a pilot program? You've used comparisons of other cities when it has benefited this agenda, but when given to you as a way of doing things more justly, I haven't heard a consideration of those ideas. Today, I come to you with yet another suggestion, because I'm always trying to come with reasons for us and ways to work around things, and I still, again, I still think a pilot program would be the best thing, but if something must be written in today, I suggest permitting existing homes with chickens as of this date or whatever date, that this becomes official, plus 25 extra permits, because that's a solid enforceable number, and this would allow people to seek permits in the future. I would like this to not be a slow process for getting rid of chickens in our city. If you're concerned about the future of our city, this continues to allow for people who move here for that appeal, which there are many of them with these big lots, to get them in the future, and it still allows for regulations to be in place for there to not be an excess of chickens in our city. So this is a compromise for all. Lastly, I do want to express my disappointment and frustration in this entire process. If you look back at the work that community members and the PZBA did throughout the entirety of 2024, and when I say work, the work that we did included research, fact-checking, FOIA requests, meetings privately and in public hearings such as this, conversation. Instead of taking all that work and accepting the proposals and considering some of the additional things that we were concerned about since day one, Genevieve mentioned this, like having compassion for the existing roosters and chickens in our city and allowing them to live out their natural lives, you've taken the proposal and made it even more unnecessarily restrictive. I've asked questions during my testimony time that have been ignored, I've sent emails to my aldermen and others with questions that have still been unanswered. This strict setup of testimony time for the community and then just dialogue amongst yourself, amongst the council, does not allow for an effective dialogue and true understanding of the issue along with valid recommendations for change. Thankfully, we did have true dialogue with the PZBA, even with those who thought differently than us, it was not one-sided, and the PZBA worked for hours drafting a proposal that met all the immediate needs of our city. They considered all perspectives and determined what was needed, so I urge you to recognize that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Dom DiGianni Filippo. You're here.
Talking on the issue of chickens, of course.
What's your name and...
Dom DiGianni Filippo.
Your address?
503 Clare Lane, I've been a 42-year resident of Prospect Heights. So my issue is that I have a friend who lives on 11 Acres in rural Wisconsin. She has chickens. First, I asked her, what is her opinion of my city allowing roosters and chickens? She says, well, you live in a city, don't you? You don't live on a farm. So anyway, she was implying that we live in a city. The other thing is, she said, roosters, right away, roosters off the bat, no way, they're loud, annoying, they annoy the neighbors. She lives on 11 Acres, she doesn't have a rooster, even though she could probably have a rooster. Then I said, this town may allow 20 chickens, and she says, what, you're going to be swimming in eggs? Why do they need 20 chickens? She has five chickens for a family of five, and she has more than enough eggs. The other thing, chickens and roosters can live 10 to 15 years. Living out their natural life would be annoying to neighbors. In my opinion, you know, since I'm anti-chicken, my opinion would be no roosters, no chickens, but I understand people, people want them. So I would, I would say five chickens, in my opinion, and no roosters. So I appreciate the council keeping, trying to regulate this, and I would also agree with the one year of inspection and more, if necessary, and the applicable fees. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Anybody else want to comment? Okay, thank you. Item seven, consent agenda, we do not have one tonight. Item eight, old business. A, ordinance O-2512, staff memo and ordinance amending Chapter 2 definitions, Chapter 3 general provisions of Title V zoning, and amending Chapter 1 animal control of Title IX police regulations of the city code pertaining to backyard chicken keeping in the R1 single-family district. This is the second reading, so we need a motion to put it on the floor.
So moved.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, ordinance O-2513, staff memo and ordinance amending Chapter 1, Section 1 of Title 12, fines and fees scheduled to include recently passed and proposed ordinance changes. This too is the second reading, we need a motion.
So moved. Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine, new business. A, Resolution R-2538, staff memo and resolution authorizing and awarding bid recommendation for the 2025 road program with Chicagoland Paving Contractors Incorporated for a cost of $359,000. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Wait before we do that. Subject or no? Subject to you? No? So we need a motion to approve? We have one, we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Mark, do you want to tell us about it?
Yes, sir. This will address repaving the two worst streets in the city, Cam McDonald Road North up to Hillcrest or the Slough and School Street right next to it. We've done patching it out in the past, a project that we're working on up on Owen and Willow. We were able to secure funds from that, coming in a little under budget, and we're going to knock these two streets out.
I think you said Cam McDonald. Did you mean...
Did you mean Cam McDonald?
Did you say Cam McDonald?
From Cam McDonald North.
Oh, okay, from Cam McDonald. Maple.
Maple. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right.
I had the right place, just the wrong statement, so. But because of the coming in a little under budget on the other project, we were able to slip these in. So we went through the whole process, and Chicagoland Paving, who's done work for us in the past, came in a low bidder, and they do good work.
And the other project was the Owen?
Owen Court and detention area for the Willow Road project.
That came in under?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's just wrapping up.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a first and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, Resolution R-2539, a staff memo and resolution approving an easement acquisition agreement with River Trails Condominium Association for the Willow Trails Park storm water improvement project for a cost of $45,000. We need a motion to approve?
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Is this a permanent easement?
Yes, sir.
It is?
So to do the Willow Park, the detention area and the new pipe, we have to go through the back of what the Willow River Trails Condominium Association, we're going to do a little bit of damage to their existing pavement. So in the agreement that was made was this will cover the permanent easement that we're requesting, and it'll give them funds to repair the road that we're not tearing up. It's a great agreement with this community, and it's the last piece of the puzzle to get this large-scale, well-funded project going.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. For the River, when we do this, are we going to let the residents that live in the back be able to park on the street or maybe in agreement with the mall next door, across the way, for them to park? Because there's a lot of people that do park, because that's like our guest parking in the back.
Correct. I believe there's about 30 spots or so that are going to be affected by it at any given time. The contractor will work with the agency with River Trails. We can do street parking, I can't speak towards parking in the plaza across the street, but we'll make sure that no one gets displaced and gets a ticket for parking out of sorts at the time.
Okay, was that something that was brought up? Was that a question?
Yes, it was.
It was?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, anything else? So we have a motion and a second for approval. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, Resolution R-2540, staff memo and resolution approving a proposal for design engineering services for Hillcrest Lake Outfall improvements with Gewalt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for a cost of $44,500, subject to city attorney approval. Need a motion to approve?
So moved. Cameron?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark, would you like to...
Yes, sir.
...tell us about this one?
The Hillcrest Lake area, when we get over in, when we get abundance of water in the lake crest, it goes into the front yards of all the homes and neighboring around there. We had proposed at one point to raise the road around there, but we're keeping it the same. same. But this project takes the water that would normally have overflowed anyways, going eastbound to Wheeling Road, that goes through the backyards of homes along Kennelworth and Owen Court, and washes out their backyard when that lake reaches its limit. This project is putting a pipe connecting the lake going north up into the park down Carl Court, so it'll give us an overflow pipe. This is very similar to the project we just completed over by the library and the Park District, where it's that, it's a relief valve. By putting this in, the water is still going to the same place. In the past, the water would go to the east through properties, flooding out backyards on its way to Wheeling Road, and then flow up to the creek. This pipe just gives it a straight shot up Owen, up to Carl Court. It's a huge improvement for what we've had there. Now, we haven't had rain in a few years. I hate to say that out loud, but for all of us that remember 2017, 18, and 19, we got the most rain we've had in biblical senses almost, and we had, at any given time, we had 17 roads in town closed. These roads are on that list. This pipe will eliminate a lot of the damage that residents occurred as the lake looked for a place to level out. So this project, which we have some special funding for, we did some pre-engineering to make sure that the concept of this would work, and now this is for Gee Walt to really put together the nuts and bolts of the project and exactly what it takes, the size of the pipe and the path. The folks that are going to be relieved through this pipe may not really understand what this pipe does for them. We've had a few homes change hands since then. Few folks that were upset at the amount of water that they had, but it was the natural flow of overland watershed. So this is going to help direct that and improve things down the road. So another great project, and again, the project itself has great funding behind it. This is the engineering part to get it actually on paper.
And there's not 15 agencies to have to deal with?
No. We originally had a plan of going directly east down Kennelworth to Wheeling Road, and we couldn't get agreement with Cook County to put a pipe along their right-of-way. So this was the alternate plan. This has been in the works for about four years.
How big will the overall project be about, dollar-wise? This is just the engineering, right?
This is the engineering. Joe, I might ask him to chime in, but I want to say it was like $375.
Well, we, we thank Senator Walker.
Yes, we do.
Who sponsored this.
Yeah.
For a legislative grant of $440,000. We anticipate there's probably $300, $350 needed from the city, which we have in the capital improvement plan. We, we've been funding it, but we just didn't have enough to put it over the top, so this makes it possible. And we anticipate getting through the permitting process through the winter with construction, hopefully next spring or summer.
Nice. All right. Any other questions? We have a motion with a first and a second on that, so I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10, staff elected officials and commission reports. Today, we have the May financial report by Finance Director Sherri Greco.
Thank you, sir. So May is the first month of the year. There's not a lot of activity that's really happened in terms of trending or otherwise, but I did try to point out a few of the most significant things that we did see in the month of May. I'll just go over a couple. The solid waste revenue looks a little high this month. We did receive three months of payment in May because they were two months behind, so they are now caught up in terms of our receiving those fees. The other revenues that came in strong this month compared to previous years, income taxes, year-to-date, which is just the one month, '24, we had $386,000, 100, $386,000. '25, we had $429,000, and now May of '24 fiscal '26, we're at $502,000. So those are strong, 18% of the budget's already been. Another one that came in nicely for the month of May is at 13.7% our utility taxes for natural gas. The trend from '24 through '26 fiscal years, $20,000, $19,000, and this year now we're already at $25,000. Again, our last one, which has historically been good the last couple of years, interest income was again strong. We're at 14% of the budget of $76,000. Last year it was 112 at this point, and the year before it was 55. So this year it slowed down a little bit from last year, but we're still in a strong position in that number. That's about all I had significance-wise on the turns for May. Again, you're reporting, seeing, maybe probably a little bit down because we're just in trend to get in pre-preparation for the audit. So at the year-end, our cutoff is a little stronger than other months. We are moving into modified accrual versus most of the year we operate cash basis. So we might see some weird stuff going on, but it's all consistent with last year and where we need to be for the audit.
No surprises?
No surprises.
Okay.
Any questions? All right.
Start with staff. Peter?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mark?
Yes, real quick. It's been a busy month. We've completed Community Day, the document destruction shredding event, the block party. This weekend coming up, we have the Rock and Run at the Chicago Executive Airport, a couple of good bands, and the run in the morning, just don't forget about it. And then Saturday, July 5th, is the parade kicking off at 10:30 from St. Alphonsus Church Parking Lot, heading over to the Hebron Presbyterian Church Parking Lot on Sean Beck. Always a good time. Look forward to seeing everyone there. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Some good news on the construction front. Wednesday night at the PZBA, we have the Sky Harbor LLC and for, with the Aviation Plaza Complex for re-subdivision, they're straightening out some lot lines, which is the first step in getting the lots prepared so that Sky Harbor can move forward with some applications. So what the ZBA will have that, you'll be seeing that in July for the re-subdivision approval. In the last two months, we've received three brand-new single-family home permits and one major remodel. Things are still active on the remodeling and home construction front. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
No report. Thank you.
Lloyd?
Only for me.
Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you. A couple of quick updates. This Friday, June 27th, Officer Coleman is expected to graduate from the police academy, at which point he will start his three-month field training program. Last week, officers from the police department and our police volunteers chaperoned 67 children to the Lincoln Park Zoo as part of our summer outreach program. We have two more events planned for the summer. This is a program that benefits our youth on the east side, takes them on various trips with police officers. And lastly, I'm excited to share a new program on behalf of the police department, which is department presentations. In an effort to proactively address criminal activity and educate community members, the department will now offer free presentations to both residents and local businesses. These presentations will focus on burglary prevention and identity theft prevention. This program is advertised on our Facebook page and the city webpage, so we look forward to getting out in the community and talking about preventive measures before these crimes occur.
Thank you. Collected? Anybody on my left?
No report.
No report?
I just want to thank everyone that participated in the SAF Dollars for Scholars event, which was last week Monday. It was a great event, and see you next year on the 22nd of June. Thanks.
Anybody on my right?
I just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in the shredding event this past weekend, including police volunteers, public works, Peter Falcone. It went very smoothly. Keep in mind that this is an event that's open to all SWIC members, so it's not just Prospect Heights, it's surrounding communities, and it really presents our city in a good light when things go smoothly like that. So thank you to everyone that was involved. That's all I have.
All right, I just wanted to thank anybody who helped with the block party. It's my favorite event in town, and the bands were good, and it was, it was, for as hot as it was, it was, it was a good turnout. So next year is our 50th anniversary, so we're already starting to plan for that, to make it a big event.
Did you get Danielle?
Who?
Good, no report.
She was good.
I was at the block party. No report.
She was. I saw her.
That was it.
Will the clerk read the expenditures and wire?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our total on the expenditures was $307,264. We had a wire payment on June 13th, 2025, in the amount of $200,855.34, bringing the total warrant to $507,857.98. For council's approval tonight, please.
So we need a motion to approve?
So moved. Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any public comments on non-agenda matters?
Yes, we have one individual, thank you. His name is Gary Briers, on the topic of Owen Court project.
Gary Briers, 402 Owen Court. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city staff. We're recent transfers, if you will, to Prospect Heights, having lived in Park Ridge for 41 years. So there were three things that I had, quite frankly, had trepidation about moving to Prospect Heights. Number one, flooding. Number two, well water. And number three, well, lack of home rule government, quite frankly. I didn't have any of those three issues back in Park Ridge. So when we looked at a house in Park Ridge in Owen Court, which my wife fell in love with, so my three issues quickly went away, quite frankly, we realized that I had to go figure out what to do about the water, the flood. I ran with a lot of interest, all the Facebook postings, photos, all of the work that you all did on getting this resolved with the Metropolitan Water Sanitary District, Cook County, which I know is a tough group to work with, in getting this project moved forward. So I'm here today to say thank you. Thank you for your diligence in doing this, pushing it forward. Thank you to city staff, having been a volunteer in previous governments before. I realize how difficult it can be working with different entities and other groups to get this all done. I've come to terms with well water for now, quite frankly, though I have really great interest. The area around me, which has brought in piping of well water, piping of well water, which I'd love to see done for our area. However, the residents of my area seem to be very attuned with well water. It don't seem to be, and share my same enthusiasm, I have to tell you. However, home rule government, city treasurer, I'm not sure which one you are.
Which is not.
He's not here. I was going to say, I read his notes with great interest and look forward to potentially reenacting that again, if we can potentially get that back on the ballot. So I know I'm meeting with Mark tomorrow to talk about some other improvements, and I appreciate his consideration in doing so. So I'm here today just to say thank you. Thank you for the work on this, but also thank you for your diligence. I realize that sometimes you come to these meetings, and sometimes it may look like a scene of a 1930s movie with the villagers coming forward with pitchforks and torches to talk to you about different items that might be the cause celebre of the day, all part of the job, but thank you again for your time and diligence.
They call, what, the three issues you brought up are the Prospect Heights trifecta.
I think so. That's for me. Of course, I didn't even vote on that, though.
Right, and you didn't win any money with it, right?
No, I didn't.